Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October 20th, meeting of the Reno County Commission. First order of business this morning is to rise and have a pledge of allegiance to the flag. Join me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we have started our meeting for the last 10 months now, I think nine months, we'll have our interim health officer Karen Hammersmith give her report, and I believe she has some friends and cohorts with her today. Lori Bauer's here and Megan's here, and so I think they want to be part of your report. So Karen, please tell us our current COVID situation.
So as of this morning, we had 566 active cases. We have 248 cases that does not include the inmates. We have a 14-day new case count of 259 and a 14-day positive test rate of 18.9%. On the radio this morning, well, it was a media outline, we had the hospital representing, they said they have 18 positive COVID patients. Three of them are intubated. We have had 11 deaths so far, and I will open it up to questions then.
The 18.9 current testing rate, is that higher than last week?
Yes.
Do you recall what it was last week?
Well, on this actual report, I have, we have a new situation report, and it has the same gating criteria because it was from the 11th, so I don't have what it was. But if I remember right, it was around 16.
We had very few deaths early on in the months of the COVID outbreak in Reno County. In fact, we were all so pleased and proud the fact that we didn't have any, and then we had one, and then we had two, and now we've had seven since October 1st.
I would have to look at when we have the announcements. I know that we have had, I reported three in the last seven days. That's our new reporting period, so we've had quite a few here in October.
And I know that you really don't want to talk about individual cases, and I understand that, totally agree, but is that potentially due to the fact that we finally had COVID invade our retirement homes? What infected this elderly or this more, this population that is more susceptible to? You've got 11 people in the hospital right now, which is many more than you used to have in the hospital.
We actually have 18 in the hospital.
18, I'm sorry. Looked at the wrong number. What's going on that's causing more people to be in the hospital than our initial months with this?
I would say that we just have way more COVID here in Reno County as of now. We have one of the highest positive test rates, and that is with doing community testing. So we have one of the highest positive test rates. We have one of the highest new case counts of 14 days, and that's because we have community spread going on. We know where the clusters are. We know how to mitigate those. So when you get them in long-term care facilities or Hutchinson Correctional Facility, as they have those, they are working to keep those people separated from healthy people and wearing PPE. But when you have it widespread in your community, which we know when we do investigations, that some people just have absolutely no idea that they were around somebody, then you're going to have more cases. And because the virus is so new and not knowing as much about it and having asymptomatic cases, which basically they really don't have a lot of symptoms, but they can still spread it, or if you have somebody very, very sick in the hospital, we stay away from people that are sick. We don't stay away from people that are healthy. And so they can be carrying this, this particular virus and not know it and spread. And so that community spread, it is what's very concerning. So I don't believe that we have 18 positive COVID cases, patients that are all from long-term care facility. Those are residents from our community.
Okay.
Not trying to, you have more?
No, go ahead, Ron.
Not trying to sort out any retirement homes or anything like that, but just take a look at the ages. What are the ages that are having more serious problems and deaths?
Obviously, the, we have way more problems if you have comorbidities, and the older you get, the more comorbidities you're going to have. But this, this also can really affect, you know, younger people, maybe people in midlife, you know? Are those still young people? I would say so.
Not quite as healthy as others, is what you're saying.
Right, exactly. But you do have, you know, some problems in the grade school, some problems in high school, but the older you get, certainly you're going to have more comorbidities and more problems with the virus.
And I know, we've talked about numbers, and I'm still trying to get my hand around this, Karen. What percentage of those, do you have any idea what percentage of those that go in to see a medical facility for whatever reason that are tested positive? What percent is that? Is there 100 people a week go in to get checked or from a, from a medical doctor?
I do not know that information. I could find that out from the clinic and from Prairie Star.
I was doing a little bit of figuring and trying to come up with your numbers, and it makes a huge difference on community testing. I've had people talk about that, but we can lower that rate down 2% to 4%. And I just used your numbers of 259 or 260 new cases, and if we test 200 people, you come up, and let's say there's 25% of those 130 that test positive, I don't, that's why I was curious about the number, so it must be higher than that. Because if we test 200 at 2%, we're at 11.21%. If we only test 150, we're at 12.86%. So those going in evidently must have a much higher rate than, than 25%. So I did some other things, just trying to work it out, okay? Because without knowing what percent of those that go to a medical facility are tested positive, we could still, you know, somewhere around 35% if we test 100, only test 150, that raises it to 17.3, which does put us in the red.
Well, maybe, Ron, to your question, Karen, can you talk about your latest weekly testings, the positive cases that have come from the community testing?
So on those tests, they have had five tested. From my numbers, I didn't bring my notebook over, but they had, I believe, 588 that they were tested out of the five clinics that they've had so far, and I know that they have caught some positives there as well. But I do not have an exact number on the amount of cases.
Somewhere around 1% to 2%.
Probably.
Yeah, with the first couple of weeks, they said it was 2%.
Yeah.
And I guess I was kind of wondering what we've seen the last two.
They've had very good turnout at them, and Megan may have a little bit more information on that as well.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out how to get us down in the orange, okay? But looking at the percentages, and that's why I was curious.
I think it would be creative accounting to get down.
Well, it may be creative counting. That's why I was just curious. That makes a difference, so I was.
Other questions of Karen, Ron?
You know, I don't, I don't believe, I like your statement on the press release. I really do. I think it's very short, concise, and to the point, the press releases. It's telling everybody to sanitize your hands, watch social distancing. If you can't, wear a mask, and if you're sick, stay at home.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's ask Megan to come up and report on what she would like to, and then maybe she'd introduce Lori Bauer, please.
Good morning, commissioners. Megan Gotchak, interim health director. I'm here to introduce Lori Bauer. Lori's with Bauer Comm Communications, and she has been the one who's been advocating for us and helping us with our communications campaign. She's been doing a great job. She's been a second arm to us at the Health Department. Without her and her firm, we would not be able to put the communications out to the community that we have been able to. So I'm going to turn it over to Lori, and do you have a clicker for her? I know she has a couple of.
Do you want the video or the PowerPoint?
The PowerPoint.
PowerPoint.
Good morning. I'm pleased to be with you here today to talk about what we've been working on for the past couple of months. As you know, we're facing enormous headwinds when it comes to behavior change. It's hard to tell anyone to do anything, especially when it's the government. So we've tried to keep that in mind as we've thought about what do we do here to communicate to folks, to help them do the things that we need them to do. So there are basically three priorities. Supporting the Health Department and providing public information. As you know, when Nick left in the middle of August, and now Lori has come, there's been kind of lack of a body to just even get any kind of word out. So that's been a big priority for us. Second, we wanted to demonstrate that COVID is here and it's serious. And third, encourage mask-wearing and other behaviors that help curb the spread. So I'll run through first what we're calling the Official County Information Sharing Initiative. So we wanted to be sure to provide a central location for information, share guidelines, FAQs, the status of COVID in the county, leveraging our existing channels, so social media and press releases and that kind of thing, and communicate more often. So a few of the things we've done are added a lot more content to the COVID-19 website and reorganized it within the context of your current website format. We reworked the daily situation report, and this, you know, is kind of an ongoing thing. Lots of people ask for lots of different kinds of information, and so we're trying to strike a balance between how much time it takes to pull the information and providing what people want in a visual way that gives them the, an idea of the severity. This, actually tomorrow, we're going to start providing a weekly, more detailed commentary on some of the numbers, so that's kind of a format that's getting worked out, too. So once things started to blow up with the positive test rate in the middle of September, people started asking a lot of questions about quarantine and certainly school gating. And so we, we really wanted to help out by providing FAQs. So these were some pretty extensive FAQs that Karen's team kind of started, and then we took and massaged so that they would be really clear. Then the press release, just alerting everybody, like, "We're in the orange. Hey, guys, this is a big deal." We helped write that, too. We've done some informational videos featuring Karen. This was an early one about when do you quarantine, answering some of those questions. We have probably four or five additional topics that we shot at the same time that we can put out as well. We have been putting together a social media editorial calendar and supporting all of these messages by putting messages out on the Reno County Emergency Management Facebook page. So that, you know, gets out to really a lot of people. If you, you'll see these numbers when you have the printed report, but the reach on these is a lot. You know, we're talking, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 on a lot of these. So a lot of people are reached through social media, which is a blessing and a curse. So just to give you an idea, the Reno County in the orange update, you know, that reached 20,000 people, and the quarantine FAQs, 19,000, just through the Facebook page. Another big initiative has been community testing, so we've been helping communicate all of the dates that have been happening this month through making them Facebook events and posts and just different materials. So these are some examples of the reminders and the various things that are going out on social media to get people to come. These are making the rounds quite a lot, too. Just our general one, you know, we've had a reach of over 26,000 people, and, you know, when you look at the number of link clicks, the interest there, you know, we're hoping just continues to grow as people understand the role that community testing plays in our positive test rate. Another thing we're doing with community testing is called Google Display. Basically, when you're cruising, 80% of sites on the internet, they're serving banner ads like this. This happened to be just a picture of the Hutch News, but we're running banner ads in places like that. We have a radio spot that's running on, at Astra stations, and then a weather sponsorship on the Eagle stations. I'll skip over that. You can kind of imagine what that says. And then we have Halloween coming up, so we're working on some things that are, you know, scary but not scary. And then also, Hershey's put together a really great Halloween safety website, and so we'll be promoting that because they talk about what you should do, whether, if you're in the green, yellow, orange, or red area. So this is just something we're working on that'll come out later this week. So that's kind of the public information initiative. The next thing is patient stories. And so here, we're trying to overcome early objections. I think now people are realizing that it's a more serious situation, but, you know, you think back, six weeks ago, people were not taking it as seriously, and they have been hearing a lot of misinformation about that. So we wanted to have local patients tell their stories in their own words in a way that people will understand that it's here in our community. So we partnered with Hutch Post to do a podcast, which is now not only available on their website, but it's running on Sundays on their stations. So this started at the beginning of September. Here's an example of, of a short promo for that.
I lived there for 11 days, and of those 11 days, seven of them I was in ICU, and that was not fun. My name is Kathy Kilpatrick, and this is my story on my COVID experience. I had raised my kids here. My daughter lives here, and her family. I couldn't live without her after this. She was such, such a help to me, and I could not ask for anything better.
So these are 15-minute episodes, and we have featured five patients, no, four patients, and then we've had Dr. Degner, we've had Elliot, our epidemiologist, and we've had Dr. Polly. This was our most recent one. So these are getting promoted out on the Hutch Post properties. So we have a sponsor message that's running on their radio stations. We have some 30-second spots as weather and news sponsorships. We have a banner ad on hutchpost.com. We have Facebook promotions. We're actually paying them to boost it through their site, so it looks like it's coming from them. And then we have some things on the Hutch Post main page. So here are just a few of the things that, that we see out there. So we're getting quite a bit of reach here, too. Impressions means eyeballs, so we're, we're getting, you know, 16,000 to 20,000 on there, and we've had almost 1,000 downloads of the podcast, so that's always a good sign because you can listen to it on the website without downloading it. The next thing we've been working on is mask advocacy. This was actually the first project that we started on, and we know that if you tell people to wear masks, they're not that happy about it. So we wanted to give people a, an emotional reason, you know, we want to do it for somebody else, not just for you. And so we asked people to do it for our students and for our business owners. So here's an example of Eric Stanbaugh. He's director of bands at Beulah High School. See if he's going to go.
It's important to me, and livelihood is important to me. I think the sooner we realize it's about the kids, the better off we are. We want them to have as much normalcy as possible and for them to be able to perform on Friday night lives. What we're asking people to do is minute compared to where, what else we could be doing, and that would be staying at home, which was absolutely brutal. Our kids are very adamant and are really strong-willed about doing their part on the field, and they call each other out if, if, if they aren't necessarily masked at the right time. And I know they have called some people out, family members and adults as well, because they really want to be in school, and they want to adhere to all the protocol that it takes to make that happen. I would say our kids are very resilient, but at the same time, they're very anxious. I think what we've been trying to do as a band is show people that you can live a normal life and still follow the protocol, and I think that's very important, to set everything aside and just do it for them. We just want to power through this, and we'll get through this as long as we just stay firm in what we got to do, because they're having a lot of laughs, and I don't want their laughs to never happen. I wear my mask everywhere at restaurants, public gatherings, because I notice that sometimes we're not doing that. And if we were trying to stress to our kids here at school that they must do, must do it, then we also need to spread that with everywhere. Even though we feel like we're in a comfortable spot, it only takes one time, and that's what it comes down to. It only takes one time, and it can magnify itself, and it could be on shutdown, no matter what, no matter what we know with the science and everything that goes down in with that. Let's just do what our health officials are telling us that we need to do, because I always put myself in their shoes. They know more than I do, and we can say that we did our part.
So we have a couple more of those. We have one of the owners of Metro Coffee, and we have Melissa Evans, who's dean of students at HMS Seven. These have been running on their own Facebook pages, on their YouTube, and also now we've started posting them on the emergency management page. We have one more in the can that we're editing, which is at Fairfield. You can look at all these numbers on your own. We have some radio spots that go along with that, too.
I'm Melissa Evans, the dean of students at Hutchinson.
They're separate. Another thing we've been doing is some more recent campaigns about proper mask use. So we have Winston the Corgi here showing us how to properly wear a mask, because we see a lot of people that are not properly wearing them, and that simply isn't good enough. These are running on Facebook and also on Google Display. Next, we have an ambassador's initiative, which is just underway. We're working with the Chamber to provide out some H-Bucks certificates to various businesses, who will then give those out to people who are wearing masks and then post on their social media. So we're trying to get businesses involved, too. So you can look at the budget. We're basically running on track. We were a little bit ahead because we were working on a lot of this public information stuff that we didn't realize was going to be quite as much, but in the end, it's all going to come out just fine. So next steps, we're going to be transitioning many public information tasks to Lori Moody. Thank goodness she is here. We are so excited. Excellent choice, whoever made that decision. And we're going to continue supporting the message by helping them frame it and social posting and that kind of stuff. We're also going to continue the mask and precautions campaign, so the mask-up for the kids videos will still go out, the proper mask use, and then additional messages. We're planning to continue the podcast campaign. Unfortunately, now we just have more people to tell their stories, but we want to keep that going, and then social messages around key topics like holiday gatherings and other things. So that's the story.
Well, Lori, thank you. I think it's interesting to see what all you have done. You know, candidly, I'm not on Facebook a lot, so I.
It's good for your mental health.
I, I have seen your banner ads, and I've seen some of your podcasts from Hutch Posts and so forth. Obviously, you've done a lot. Could you speak a little bit more about your interaction here in the next few months with our new communications director and how you feel that might proceed to help us move forward after your contract ends?
Well, I think there are just a lot of, being the communications officer for the Health Department is honestly a full-time job, and so she's going to have other responsibilities, too, like communicating these meetings and such, even at a very basic level. But I think transitioning a lot of these things over with the situation report and the weekly briefings, I think just having a process in place where it makes that very smooth, the press releases and other kinds of communication, and then helping a lot on social media, too. And social media isn't just about posting. It's also about playing referee and answering questions. Facebook is really a customer service channel in your case, and so, you know, there just haven't been bodies to be dealing with that kind of customer service stuff, so I think she can help on that, too. And then just in general, helping, you know, giving some suggestions on, on social media strategy going forward and, and other things.
Okay. Ron, you asked for this update today. You have questions of Lori or Megan?
I really like the Hutch Post idea. I think people, a lot of more people read it, and of course, the radio, people who listen to radio. I haven't heard much at all. I haven't read much at all. And so I, speaking from a countywide standpoint, I mentioned this early on, that we have three weekly newspapers, and a lot of people, like Commissioner Sellers, don't necessarily just reach out to find these social media sites, Facebook and so forth, when they're not, when they don't come directly to them, okay? And so I would like to see you look at, I'm not telling you what to do, but I want to see you look at, some informational to the Clarion, the Dennis Gown Valley News, and the Record to just inform people where they can find information, nothing else. Hutch Pose, tell them, you know, a lot of people don't take Hutch News anymore, but if they have somewhere to look, say, hey, with your expertise in marketing, I'm sure you could put together something really nice for that. And there was an article in the Record last week that, from Arlington, the first 100 years, that was a really excellent article on the 1918 Spanish Flu and the effects that it had on the city and the people and how the schools handled it and so forth. And I thought that was really excellent, and to somewhere get that information out and utilize these smaller weekly newspapers that, they contain school news and so forth that a lot of people read in their specific school district area. And so I would certainly like to see that looked at fairly seriously.
Absolutely, yeah, that's it.
And I mentioned this earlier on, and I haven't seen anything in there. They also, Dennis Gown News had an article written by a lady that I know her and her folks about her experiences with, and I think I passed that on, but I'd just like to see you utilize that.
Sure, I think that's a great idea.
And.
I agree with you, Ron. I think some of these community newspapers might have more readership at this point in time.
Catch some people.
Than, than our major newspaper, which is.
I do like the reworked sit rep.
Oh, good.
I really think that's, that's good. But that would be the only thing I would say right now.
Sure, happy to look into that.
They're really, they're really happy to have that information given to them. Every time I've sent out a press release on anything, whether it's a church deal or something else, they've been more than cordial to print.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much, Lori, for being here this morning and giving us an update on all that you've been involved in, and obviously, the, our two people at the Health Department feel like you've done a very, very good job assisting them, so we thank you for those efforts.
Well, thank you, and I have written reports. I'll just leave them with Randy for you.
Okay, thank you. Adam, do you have information for us today?
Good morning, commissioners. Adam Weiss, our emergency management director. As you know, we're still under a public health emergency that's still in effect until December 31st of 2020. The state disaster declaration is still set to expire November 15th of 2020, and that can be extended again by, by the Finance Council. Secretary of KDHE, Dr. Lee Norman, will hold his press conference on Wednesday, October 21st, at 1,600 hours at 4:00 in the afternoon, and then Thursday, they will update the quarantine guidelines. So this Thursday on the 22nd, they're going to be looking at quarantine guidelines again. Currently, those have not changed. The, the highlight on that one is if you attend an out-of-state gathering where you cannot socially distance and you cannot wear your mask, you'll have to quarantine when you get back into the state of Kansas. Currently, there's 105 counties that have active COVID-19 cases, and there's 72,968 positive cases in Kansas. That's an increase of 2,001. That's an increase of 2,113 since they released numbers on Friday. So those numbers are at current as of 9:00 on the 19th of October. Currently, they're tracking two, KDHE's tracking 241 active outbreaks. Those numbers were updated on October 14th and will be updated again on October 21st. Of those, long-term care facilities are 89, which is up four. Colleges or universities are at 26, which is down two. Private businesses are up three at 28, and then schools are up three at 29. So those are just the high ones on that outbreak there. Non-congregate shelterings are set up in eight counties. Reno County is not one of them. Of those eight non-congregate shelters that are set up, there are 57 residents staying at those facilities. There is an HHS memo, Health and Human Services memo, that indicates 366,455 new cases were of COVID-19 from October 9th through the 14th. That's a 16.4% increase from the previous weeks. During the same period, there's 4,893 fatalities, which is an increase of 3.1 from previous weeks. So that'll take us into what Dr. Chris Murray stated. Dr. Chris Murray is the Director of the Institute of Health Metrics and Evaluation for the University of Washington. And he states, "If you look at a map of the U.S., this is exactly what we expected. The whole northern half of the U.S. transmission is in an upswing." So he goes on to talk about Europe and other countries, and he talked about their fall and winter surge. And that fall and winter surge that those other countries saw is just now coming to the U.S. and that's why we're seeing such an upswing. Another thing I wanted to talk about briefly was our local order, 2003. It's a local mass gathering order. One of the misconceptions that I've received a lot of questions on and people have reached out to is that they think it's a local mask order. And simply, it's just a local mass gathering order. Our mask mandate comes from the governor through executive order, which is in place until her disaster declaration expires. The governor has two mask mandates through executive orders. One of those is 2052, which requires most Kansasans to wear a mask. There are some exemptions there. And then Executive Order 2059, which mandates all individuals in school buildings and facilities wear masks. So that's where the mask mandates come from. They don't come from a local health order. And finally, the last thing I want to touch on is personal protective equipment. We're still working to get personal protective equipment into the county. The only two areas that we're struggling to find is N95s and gloves. Nationwide, those are very hard to get. I don't think county's going to receive any N95s from any vendors, just simply because we don't, we can't find them. The nitrile gloves, we should be able to get some of those in, but it'll probably be in the next, hopefully, the next 30 days. As far as the three-ply mask goes, we're getting a shipment of half a million of those that were purchased via CARES funding, and those will be in county on this Thursday and ready for distribution. So those are available to any businesses, nonprofit, religious organizations, basically anyone who needs a mask. We want to be sure that we can get those in the hands of those who need them. So to get those masks, you get on the county website, the County HO page, there's an icon that looks like a mask. You click on that, fill out the form, follow instructions and submit it, and we'll fulfill those requests. So again, just encouraging everyone to wear their mask. And if your business or organization doesn't have them, reach out to them. We'd be happy to provide it. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Adam, I don't have a very thorough report this morning. I felt like... Ron, do you have questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Commissioners.
If you say, "Judy Holdley," you have maybe one. Reiterate that again, Adam. If you are a business or an organization and you need some masks, to contact you at the Emergency Management.
See, you get on our county webpage. It's renogov.org. And right there on the webpage, there's a link that looks like a mask. You fill out that form and you submit it. If there's anyone who happens not to have the internet or can't get online, by all means, reach out to my office, 694-2974. I'd be happy to provide that form for you, help you fill it out, whatever you need. And this goes for public gatherings or mass gatherings as well. If you're having a large event and you need masks, reach out to us. We'd rather you have those masks and use them than turn into some event where the COVID gets spread around.
I know you've done that before in July, and I think that was very much appreciated, the fact they had the opportunity to get those. So it's renocounty.org. Look at the mask and click on it and fill out the... Is that right?
Yes, sir, renogov.org.
Renogov. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Karen and Lori and Megan and for being here today on our weekly announcement. We'll let you guys move on so others can enter the room. Thank you very much. This point in time, on our agenda, we have public comment for any items not on the agenda. We're having Sean to check outside and see if there's any people out there that want to make a public comment this morning.
Renee had sent me an email. There is someone out there waiting.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll be patient.
It's nice to have that report from our company, yeah, see what's going on, what they're doing.
I thought the things that I... I was like you, Ron. I hadn't seen everything that they had created and so forth, and so I think it was good to have the report. But I had seen bits and pieces of several of the things that were produced and their communication there with the number of hits is significant, so... Yes, sir. At this point in time, we'll entertain anybody who wants to make a public comment for any item not on the agenda. We have none?
We can't find the person, Renee.
Okay.
Those guys with Idea Tech.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move on. Determined additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Hurst, I know of one, the county administrator has asked under the consent agenda, item B, to approve a purchase of a truck to replace a truck that was totally destroyed in a accident, which I do, I believe was not our fault, that we received insurance money for, request from the Public Works Department to buy a new truck for $24,270 from Allen Samuels here in Hutchinson.
Yes, I, we've got that, and the insurance payment was considerable, and so there's some, if I'm reading this right, $773.48 difference between the insurance and the vehicle. So that's the cost.
So with your permission, we'll add that to the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
County Administrator, do you have any items to add besides that?
No.
Ron, do you have any items to add?
I have none.
Would you make a motion to approve the revised agenda?
If you're ready, I would do that. I would move to approve the agenda that has added to.
Okay, I second that. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of vouchers in the amount of $1,124,726.91 and the $24,270 to purchase a new pickup truck for Public Works to replace a truck that was totally destroyed in an accident, which we've received insurance money for.
I would move to approve the consent agenda as provided.
Second, is there any discussion of any items?
I have none.
Okay, if not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. We'll move on to business items. Our first business item today is a proposal from Idea Tech to run fiber optics to maintenance to Public Works and solid waste. And this will be presented by Randy Parnington, and then I believe there's a representative here from Idea Tech to take questions and further discuss. Randy, would you introduce this item, please?
Yes. Okay, this item is, as previously mentioned at commission meetings, and what you mentioned, adding a fi, or running a fiber line ultimately from the courthouse down to the maintenance shop and then to the Public Works facility in South Hutchinson, and then also to the landfill, which would tie into the new Scale House project. Right now, Public Works and landfill are point-to-point, basically towers. Those get interfered a little bit with weather, water towers in the way, trees. They get dropped every once in a while, their connections are dropped. It's not extremely frequent, but it is, does take place. I believe the, and Mike's here also, from Information Services to, if you have questions more detailed about technology, but the point-to-point, especially at the landfill, is between 150 and 200, and I, the term, is it mega paper? Megabits compared to a fiber line. If, when we do this, we'd probably get one gig, so about 10 times faster and more reliable When this was mentioned a couple months ago, we were looking at possibly CARES Act money to tie the Public Works facility where we could put a few, a couple or a few employees for remote work. They could space out more there than in other facilities at the county. The concern was, we were very uncertain that we could actually get this project completed by December 30th, going through all the process, the permitting process. It was also mentioned of possibly tying into a, the private provider, Idea Tech, out at the landfill. They already have service out there. There were some concerns from the county wanting to have our own line for various reasons, security, having our line coming back to our network, our connections. So that was deferred. You got, the commission kind of said, you know, look at alternatives. And then Idea Tech and Reno County's Information Services had gotten together and Idea Tech made a proposal, which is included in the packet, to do this in three phases and be a true public-private partnership. I believe they would also be laying their own fiber lines, same trenching, which would then benefit the community of who they serve, along with allowing the county to have its own private line. The Phase 1, we feel could be part of the CARES Act money. We could rearrange, reallocate items in the county's part of the 12.6 million. And that connection would be from the maintenance shop to the Public Works facility. That'd be Phase 1. Phase 2 would be then connecting...
Okay, now let me stop you there.
Okay.
I thought that was from Public Works to a spot on Morton Drive.
Right. Yes, so that's where the maintenance building is.
Okay, our maintenance office.
And then my understanding is Idea Tech would then give a, connect with their network to get us temporary service by the end of this year to work with the CARES Act money and for remote work, distance working. And Phase 2 would then be connecting the courthouse to the maintenance shop. That would be then our fiber line would connect all the way to the Public Works facility through that connection. Phase 3 would be to the landfill, from the maintenance shop in South Hutch to the landfill. The three phases have different, the first one, Phase 1 would be covered by the CARES Act money. Phase 2, we would have different reserve money that the county has to cover that cost. Phase 3 would be covered, would probably put it in the bond or paid cash from the landfill fund, which is an enterprise fund. It's not property taxes. So any questions for me on this? And I don't know if Idea Tech or Mike wants to clarify or get into more details of how this would work.
Okay, well, I do have questions of either Mike or the representative of Idea Tech. So why don't we have, ask the Idea Tech representative to come up and introduce himself and then we'll let either him or Mike answer the questions that we might have.
Yeah, good morning. Thanks for having me here. Thanks for going through that. Did a good job on the summary. I'm Nate Oswald from Idea Tech, Director of Sales for Idea Tech. And this project has a lot of synergies to Idea Tech. And so when we were looking at this, we were pretty excited that we could expand our network and also provide a need for the county in a timeline that things are really fitting. So with the CARES, we have a very tight deadline. So initially, when we were looking at this, we thought, man, that there's a, there's a need. We see the overall project, but we were really struggling to fit that project into the timeline of what our needs were. So we then did look at a phased approach, and that phased approach is very feasible. So that first run, which is budgeted according to your CARES, is really getting more bandwidth to your Public Works. That's a need to be able to spread out your faculty and get some additional bandwidth out there. So we cover that in the Phase 1, and with that, it's very feasible to do in that timeline. Now, looking at the budget in the past for what this was projected to cost you guys, we were able to significantly save the county money. And the way that we're doing that is we're looking at it from a shared trench type of handoff. So we reviewed this in the past, potentially providing the county with services because we have a need to build the same route of what you guys are building, and it's a need separate from what the county needs are. And so we talked about it, and there were some red flags. For you guys, it's very important for security purposes to keep your fiber separate from the Idea Tech fiber. So we are a tenured company that has created networks for Idea Tech, but we also have built third-party fiber. So what we've done is we've basically created an environment where we can share the same physical trench in the ground, but we can keep things completely separate to make sure that it meets your requirements, especially for your security needs. So when we looked at this project, we were able to do it pretty much for two-thirds of the cost that you guys had originally planned for the overall project. So those are probably the main things that we're looking at that's very important in this project. Number one, that first phase, it's very important, the timeline, to meet the government mandates for what has to occur. Number two, we are going to build fiber from Hutch, pretty much the courthouse, this very location, to South Hutch from Idea Tech's perspective. And so when we got with the county, there was a need for you guys to do that as well, to get from the courthouse to your maintenance facility. So we're able to save a considerable amount of money for the county. And while doing this, we can also expand the Idea Tech network and supply to county and city customers. And then number three, the Public Works is just a need, like what we were talking about where it increases the speeds. Well, with that, in this whole project and the realm of things, we can easily then tie in the maintenance building out to the landfill or the solid waste. So that's a general overview. I'm sure that there might be some additional information. I'm more than happy at the end of this to take your questions. I can take those now, or I don't know if you have some comments before we get into the questions.
Nate, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Stand by.
Mike Matthews, Information Services Director. I really don't have any additional comments. I mean, we've presented this in the past and, but I am more than glad to stand for any questions that I could try to answer to the best of my abilities, so...
Okay, well, Mike, I do have considerable questions here, and some of them come from prior presentations that you've made, and I don't know... that you've made, and I, I don't know if we have all the information this morning to, to relate to this or not. As far as the Phase One and Phase Two, I, I think those pretty much make sense to me. The Phase Three, I'm, I'm really struggling with. You were here a month or so ago and said that you got a quote from Ideatech for connection to their present fiber line at Solid Waste. And the problem with that was, in your mind, one, security, and two, that they couldn't give you the speed that you needed. Now, subsequent to that conversation, somebody told me that Ideatech made the presentation to you based on the speed that they thought you wanted, and, and there could be a different type of quote. What speed do you need for your connection at the, at the Solid Waste Facility? And I can understand that maybe this 150 is not, not big enough for today's standard. I understand that, but I, I just don't understand why we can't be hooking up on a monthly basis to something that's already there.
Well, first of all, we can. I'm absolutely not saying we can't. I'm saying what was offered to us is not going to work.
Okay, so did we get a re-quote on something faster?
We have not. That being aside, I still feel like security is an issue. I, I'm not saying that there's anybody nefarious in, in their organization. You know, I don't know those people, but I do know what our responsibilities are with our data, and that is to protect it. And if somebody were to somehow get into that line, which is a public line, they're in our network. It's, they're not just affecting the landfill. They're, they're in our network. They, they then have the ability to get into the Health Department, which is a HIPAA violation, huge fines. You know, any seajust information that we may have, even bigger problems. And then just the, the, I think that the, the public embarrassment of being hacked. And I'm not saying that's going to happen. I, you know, but they, those things do happen. And we would do our best to protect that on both ends, but we read about it every day. So, that, that's really, in my mind, a huge concern. Of course, we will do as directed. I'm trying to give you what I think is the best solution.
Like, I, I understand that, and I, in my almost two years here at the county, I've, I've pretty much gone along with county administrator and, and departments' suggestions without asking too many questions, but I, I've got, I've got concerns here that we don't have enough information to make this decision on what we call Phase Three. And, and you're, you're telling me that we do not have a new quote from Ideatech for a faster line? I, I understand your concern about security. We all have security issues. But unless I'm missing something when it comes to technology, hospitals don't have their own cables. All kinds of people are using lines that belong to other people and putting their own security on both lines. I, I just, in, in my opinion, and, and again, I don't know that I have all the data, and that's why I'm at the point today to, to maybe want to move towards Phase One and Phase Two and then get more understanding before we do Phase Three, which I understand is going to be done next year anyway. Has nothing to do with the connection to Public Works or to the Maintenance Department. But if, if you're wanting to spend $280,000 of county money, the first quote that I believe I understood from Ideatech on a monthly basis was somewhere in the range of $500 a month, and, and I understand that wasn't for fast enough, but, but I don't understand why we can't get an acceptable quote. That, that's a cost recovery of 46 years that I'm not willing, at this point, with the information that I have, to, to approve. There's also, I had a meeting with county administrator on this. We have additional yearly costs of, from some railroads, I believe, that we have to go under or something. And we all know about railroads, and the hard it is to work with railroads on an ongoing basis. Who knows what those costs might be in the future? And, and I, I'm really struggling with Phase Three. Now, maybe if we let Nate come back to the podium, he can tell us. Can Ideatech provide us a faster connection on your existing cable at, at the Public Works Department, at Solid Waste?
Yeah. So, you know, those are great questions that you're bringing up. So, we have quoted 100 meg connection. We have capacity to that location to quote out a gig, 1,000 meg, to that, to that location. So, that is something that, that we can review for you guys, absolutely. From our side, I mean, we provide to, to medical facilities. We provide to other government identities, and, and, you know, those are concerns that, that they would have too. So, as far as security, I mean, that's something that, that would be pretty much on you guys' network where you need to review the firewall, the security. That's going to be defined to your network, and there's things that, that you guys can do to protect yourself. So, from an Ideatech perspective, we're looking at this two ways. There's the initial proposal where we quoted out 100 meg. We can relook at that. We could look at more bandwidth. And then the, the second proposal, which we are here today that we're talking about, is a fiber. It's a fiber build connection. It is a shared trench. So, as far as, you know, the, the fiber costs, it's going to be a very, very competitive build to get fiber to that facility. So, really, if, if we're looking at it from two sides, you have, we, we could rebid the, the first connection with higher bandwidth, or we could discuss a little bit further of how to make the, the fiber side work for you guys in what your needs are. So, is there something specifically that I could?
Okay, can, can you provide a higher bandwidth to the Solid Waste area with your existing cable?
Yes, sir. We can provide up to 1,000 meg.
From what you know in, in your environment, if we do this cable on our own in a shared basis, do you agree that we'll have ongoing yearly costs with the railroads to have this go underneath their properties?
Well, I believe that's already in place. Do you have something with the railroad already, or not?
We do to the, to the correctional facility, yes.
Okay. So, there would be some ongoing?
Mike, aren't they going to charge us per crossing?
What you're asking, is there a monthly fee to this?
Or a yearly fee to?
Yes, that would be correct. It, it's every crossing.
And again, I'm not pleased, the gentleman, don't take me as asking these questions, but, but I'm seeing a 46-year return on our costs, and that doesn't even include the railroad fees that are going to be one or two railroads each year that, that there's a cost for. So, at this point, I'm comfortable approving the Phase One and Phase Two, which does our South Hutch connection to the courthouse. But I, I want, I need more information as far as Phase Three is how, how we get a return for our money. And Mike, I, I guess until, Nate has just said that they deal with hospitals and they deal with everybody that has security issues. I, I don't think the security issues work. I respectfully disagree with your support for security.
Well, I, I understand, and I respect what you're saying. I'm not arguing with you at all.
And the, the first part is pretty easy when it's CARES money that we're using. And, and also the fact that it appears that we want to place more people down at the Public Works Facility in South Hutch on an ongoing basis. So, I could, I, Phase One and Phase Two makes sense to me. But until we know what a monthly cost is to connect to Ideatech, just, I'm, I'm not willing to vote for that. And obviously, that's one of our problems with two commissioners. If you've got one that won't vote for something that can't be approved. Ron, I've done all the speaking. You got any comments on this?
I was looking just at, at the direction of the line from Morton out to the landfill, and it looks to me like there's just a one railroad crossing there, but it's both Santa Fe and UP. Is that right?
That's correct.
And rest of it goes out on Sixth Street, up Broad Acres, out on Clark Road, the way I have it finally analyzed here. I, Mike, I guess one question I have, and I like, I appreciate the security issue and the ability of Ideatech to ramp up should we go the other direction, but... How much communication is there with, pretty, between the courthouse and the landfill, is there?
Well, we, we run phones over it. We run our phones over it, and we're also in talks with Ideatech and Cox about going to a different phone system. So, that would be one thing that we do. Of course, they run all the same software as we run here over it. But then they also have a, a database out there for tracking the waste that comes in and the weight and all of that. And so, we replicate that data back here so that we can back it up. And I'm not sure how often we replicate it, but I, I think it's two or three times a day. So, basically, they use the same kinds of things there that we use here. There's not a whole lot of differences. I mean, they use the, the, our financial management system, our HR systems, you know, all the same things that we do here. Now, you know, if we, we change phone systems, the usage may go up some. But I don't think it's a lot because they don't have a lot of phones out there. You know, the one thing that you might want to consider is, is we don't know what's going to happen in five years. You know, we're doing things today we would have never dreamed of doing five years ago. So, we don't know what's going to happen five, 10, 15 years from now. So, those are, you know, those are some things to think about. You know, I don't know. I'm not saying that they can't be provided for, because surely they can. And I'm certainly not here arguing with you. I hope you understand that.
I hope we respectfully disagree, Mike.
Well, I don't know that I totally disagree with you. I just feel a sense of responsibility to provide you with as much information as I can. Because ultimately, if it all goes south, it's going to be because I didn't give you enough information. And I never want to put the commissioners in that position. So, I, I think that, you know, we own a lot of ground out there, and we, we don't know what, what the future holds, so.
Mike, what does this mean when you say fiber count of 96?
So, that means there would be 96 strands of fiber in the, in there. So, it, it takes a pair to create one connection. So, that's what that means.
So, and the way this, in this partnership basis that suggested you're, you're making one trench and you're putting two plastic pipes in that trench so we, our fiber is in our own pipe?
Yeah, and with that, with completely separate vaults for access as well. So, you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to have two pipes and not be able to access that are have the same access points. So, there's separate access points, two pipes, completely different, separate, as far as when we need to get to that fiber and, and do repairs or connection points. So. And I think, you know, to talk to some of the security concerns of what we have, you know, we can circle back around and figure something out that, that makes everybody feel comfortable here, too. Another, there's a couple other different thoughts that I have, you know, that we could talk about. I think that the main thing is, there's, there's a couple different options right now. I mean, with Ideatech building fiber out that direction, we can revisit the current build and maybe look at, instead of a, a shared trench, maybe a shared fiber to that location specifically that, that still has a little bit more depth of, of security that we could cut out. Also, we can, we can just sit down and reevaluate one more time.
Well, I, my request is for additional information on that part of this proposal. And I think if, if I get additional information, I might very well change my mind and think that the separate cable is the very best thing. But at this point in time, to ask taxpayers to spend $280,000, it'll take 46 years plus to recoup because we don't know the, the railroad costs and so forth. I, I just, that's not what they elected me for. So, I, I guess, Ron, do you have any more questions? If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Well, yeah, I do have. I'd like to too. I, after going through all of these different things that Mike provides us on how to be safe and secure with fishing and smishing and fishing and all of those other things, and I'm not quite sure they, what they all mean, except it can get you into trouble. And it can affect the whole system down. I know Butler County had quite a situation out there with regard to when they were so-called hacked. I don't know what the proper term is.
That they were ransomed.
That's, that's, it was a, it was a real disaster and cost a lot of money. And whereas, I, I agree, I think maybe we need a little more information to, to make sure that we are spending the taxpayers' money right. But I really like this idea of a government entity and a private enterprise partnership. I don't think that we have very many of those. And I am, I lean towards all three phases just because of that security issue. If we can, but on the same hand, if we can look at what the total costs are going to be down the road, just besides that 280,000 to get it out there, I, I, I would be willing to look at that. But I kind of favor doing this just because of security issues. I, I, I don't know how much it would cost us to, ever five or 10 or 15 years, to get out of a deep hole with everything being hacked. So, that's my, my, my real concern here with regard to that. I have one other question. Is there, with it going, with that fiber line going to, two fiber lines going out into South Hutchinson, there would be an opportunity, would there be an opportunity for, say, the extension office if they don't have sufficient, need a little more bandwidth or bytes?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great question. So, we do currently have fiber running past that facility. And so, that's something that we can discuss, getting additional bandwidth, whether it's temporary, future, whatever your needs are. You know, we'd love to support you guys, especially, you know, as you're talking. You know, we'd love to support you guys, especially, you know, as you're talking about restructuring and spreading out, maybe your, you know, your, your people through the organization. We can do something for you guys to help out in those regards as well.
I don't know that it's needed, Randy.
Yeah.
But at all, but I just, I was just looking at future that way. But I, I think that since we, we don't have enough here to agree on Phase 3, why, I think that's where we'll have to go right now. And I certainly want to go with Phase 1 and 2. The other question I had was the options that are listed here. Is it pretty well certain that we can go on the bridge?
Yeah, so from,
That's our bridge, right?
So there's,
It is, but our Public Works Director has, oh, yeah, go ahead. Going on the bridge, our Public Works Director has recommended against that, not knowing when that bridge is going to have to be rebuilt or renovated. So it's going to be recommended that we do the river bore for the $40,000 option for the long-term. That investment, I think, will pay off in the long-term going underneath.
All right. And that's, that maybe I, we know that. And what about Ideatech's thoughts on that?
Yeah. So we can definitely attach to the bridge. To go a little bit further on what was mentioned is, you know, it's been talked about on how long that bridge is going to be there until we need to replace or repair. And so from a fiber perspective, when you do that, I mean, that's going to take down those facilities when they're connected with fiber. So as far as the, the long-term, in the grand scheme of the project, it would, it's not a bad idea to, to go that route, to not have impact down the road. But from a physical build standpoint, we can connect and we have connected in the past two bridges. So it is an option that we can do. It's more so that option was put in there specifically to the concerns of a bridge replacement down the road.
So how much problem is there? What, what the downtime, et cetera? What's the end result of having to, when a bridge is replaced, of having to circumvent that line or do something different for a period of just, say, a year?
Yeah. So I, I haven't specifically ran into that, but I know that we would be able to facilitate something with, you know, the workers on that bridge. And we would just basically either splice in and, and make a move temporarily. But we would have to obviously find something that works for the engineering group, you know, that, with that bridge as well. So can't, can't talk specifically to all those things, but I know that we could find a way, you know, to help in that situation. So.
And also talk about the engineering. Is that going to be a required? I see it sound as an option, a $40,000 engineering stamp?
From our side, we've, you know, internally, we do a lot of engineering on this. We have a contractor that, that we've gotten with. And they've been very helpful that we could provide any documents that you'd want. That's really a preference from you guys' side, long-term.
Does the city require any? City?
You mean the county or?
No, the city. You'd be going through.
The city would not require, no.
All right. That answered that, I think. So.
Okay. What, Nate, what about, since on item one, we have to have that done by December 29th or what, 30th?
Yeah.
What is your guarantee that that will happen?
Yeah, it's written into the contract. I mean, that's something that we take on and that's our responsibility. So. The only variances in that would be outliers that we can't control. But as far as the feasibility and the study that we've done, it's very feasible. So that would be our commitment. With that, to specifically talk to, to, to making that piece of it, we don't have to physically build from the maintenance building to the public's work to make that happen. I mean, if it's getting to a time crunch and we can splice in to current infrastructure for a DIA, which is direct internet access, that wouldn't have the connectivity back to the courthouse, which is our long-term, you know, goal. But that gets us internet bandwidth and that, that meets the standards and the requirements that, that we would have. So.
Basically, you have to provide that service by December 30th, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
And Randy, you feel that that meets your COVID regulations?
Leslie and I have discussed this, and yes, it does.
Okay.
We, we're confident.
Personally, I'd like to see all three projects done, but let's, let's get some more information. And I would certainly be in favor of, with Phase 1 and 2 to go along.
So is that a motion?
I thought you were going to make the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we, the county contract with Ideatech, their proposal on Phase 1 at $240,000 and Phase 2 at $169,000, plus the river bore of $40,000. And that we request more information pertaining to Phase 3.
I'll second the motion. That won't affect any of the Phase 1 or 2 estimates, right?
No, that's very feasible. We can move forward with Phase 1 and 2.
And I, I think, as far as I'm concerned, we can make a decision on Phase 3 as soon as additional information is provided to the County Commission. So.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the work.
We haven't, we haven't voted for you yet. Wait till we vote for you before you thank us, okay? Any other discussion?
Again, this is one of those things that not often do we get a private enterprise and government agency to work in partnership on a project.
I agree with that. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Thank you, Nate, for being here. Appreciate you.
Mike, thank you and hope you get a little more rest than what you've had and hope your wife gets, gets along.
We're hoping she gets along today, but we'll wait and see.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item today will be a presentation by John Deardoff and Gary Meeger, who is our representatives for CARES funding. Gentlemen?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Gary Meeger and John Deardoff is here. We're here today to provide another update on the CARES Act funding for the nonprofit organizations and private schools and to present recommendations from the Application Review Committee. Over the last few weeks, John and I have provided briefing to you on the program that was approved to fund these organizations, but would like to take a minute or two just to review for everyone the process. There was approximately $1,089,000 available from the $12.6 million that Reno County received to distribute to the community for the COVID-19 expenses. It was determined that the nonprofit organizations and private schools are eligible to receive Round 1 funding. So the county developed a program that was approved by the state of Kansas. The program that was developed is one in which qualified nonprofit organizations can apply for the reimbursement of COVID-19-related expenses that they have already incurred or may incur before the end of this year. They can also apply for reimbursed revenues that they have lost because of the pandemic. The reimbursements were capped at $25,000 for incurred expenses and that, those are expenses that occurred between March 1st and August 31st of this year. $25,000 for future expenses, expenses that occurred between September 1st and December 30th, and up to 25% of the loss, of their loss of revenue. Under this program, private schools were eligible to receive reimbursements for COVID-related expenses they have already incurred or may incur before the end of year. The COVID-19-related expenses incurred for private schools was not capped because there is no compensation available for lost revenue. In other words, they were treated, private schools were treated the same as the public schools in that regard. The announcement for nonprofits and private schools to apply for CARES Act funding was, was made on the, on September 1st. The organizations were able to submit their applications online between September 15th and September 30th. You appointed a committee to review and make recommendations on the applications. That committee consisted of Bob Bush, Randy Partington, Aubrey Patterson, Deborah Twofold, Lisa Gleason, John Deardoff, and myself. So there's a, a real balance between county officials and, and, and private or nonprofit organizations. The committee met twice during the week of October 5th or shortly after the applications were due. And I'm pleased to inform you that the committee has completed its work and you have a copy of recommendations before you today. I'd like to turn it over to John Deardoff, who will go over the recommendations for, from the committee. Certainly want to thank the committee that members because there was quite a bit of work involved in this, as you can, as you can tell, and so want to thank them for their help.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you this morning. You have before you the, kind of the spreadsheet we put together for our recommendations from the committee. And I'm not going to go into each detail of that, but just brief summary of what that spreadsheet represents. And it starts out with each organization and then we, we go across the spreadsheet with a total aid from other sources. This would be money that some of these organizations got, like PPP money. We, we took that into consideration as we allocated these funds. And then we've got incurred expenses, recommended to be paid there, future expenses. And these are expenses that basically are COVID-related. Some of these organizations had, had spent money to prepare their facilities for COVID-related things and then other planned expenditures that they had going forward. And then the next category was the expected revenue loss. And also, we've got a brief summary of that spreadsheet of each of the organizations and their explanation is their need for, for the funding. You know, we had 30 agencies that requested funding. We, we have recommended 27 of those be funded. The three that weren't, one was a for-profit business and two were churches. And out of the 27 that we funded, it was just, right at 10 agencies had requested the incurred or planned expenses. And the balance of them were primarily revenue loss, which we figured that would be going into this whole process. So. As Gary mentioned, we had $1,089,000. And I don't have that number here. I'm hoping Gary can tell me that. We allocated almost all that money, just short of, I think, $1,000.
$1,700 is.
$1,700. So we allocated of the $1,089, all but $1,700. So. So with that, I would stand for any questions that any of you have or Gary would stand pertaining to each of the individual recommendations that we had.
John, are your recommendations today exactly the same as the data that was given to us, individual commissioners, last week?
Yes, sir.
Hasn't changed?
Has not changed.
Okay. I have no questions. Ron?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank everybody for their job that they did to put this together. It wasn't easy and I appreciate the, including the little wording that they presented to you with regard to how and why they were requesting this. I think that was good for us to know, I think, too.
Thank you. Great, great committee. And it was really helpful to have Deborah and Lisa and Aubrey on. They bring a different perspective than what Gary and I might have had throughout the process, but felt really good about that. So.
The, John, about how long did it take, not to accumulate the information, but how long did your group meet to come up with these recommendations?
We met on October the 7th for four hours? And then the next day, we met for a couple hours, yeah. So it was a, a process.
So the first meeting, there was a little bit of difference, ritual or?
Yeah, you know, we went through each one of them in the first meeting and kind of came up with our recommendations. There were some questions Gary and I needed to follow up with each of the agencies that we had ready for the next day and just to clarify some of their requests and, and specific information related to the financials. And so. And then a lot of discussion and, but, but overall, I thought the process went really well. So. And our plan are hopefully on approval today. And we've sent out this information to all the agencies just yesterday so they kind of know what the recommendations were.
They're aware of it.
And is that obviously with the incurred and recom, or future expenses, there's going to be other information that they need to supply to the county to pay that. We're going to set up a Zoom call with those agencies, the 10 that requested that. And hopefully the revenue, expected revenue loss, those checks can be processed as soon as possible upon the County Commissioner's approval.
Well, just like Commissioner Hurst, I'd like to thank the committee very, very much. In my opinion, this is very, very well done. I think the committee did a good job under the leadership of Gary and John. But I guess I'd just like to go back one more step and thank, as I recall, it was our county administrator's idea to ask Gary and John to be the point people on this. And through this process this year on both the schools and now the nonprofits, as a hell of a decision that Mr. Partington requested the County Commission to do. And I guess it was good judgment on the County Commission to say, let's go do this.
Let's follow his guide.
I, from things that we've heard from other counties, they're struggling with getting this done in time. We've heard that some counties took the biggest share of the money and let little bits and pieces for others and so forth. That's not fair. I think we've just been very open and I appreciate everybody involved with that. And so with that, I would make the motion that we approve the CARE funding for nonprofit organizations and private schools as presented to us today on a spreadsheet dated 10/11/2020.
Second to motion.
Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Thank you to Aubrey and Lisa and Deborah for joining this committee.
Thank you for the opportunity to administer.
Thank you. County Administrator Report for October 20th. Randy, what items do you have?
Just wanted to let you, the commission, know that the Republican Party, the Precinct Committee will meet on October 27th, 6:30 in the Stringer Fine Arts Building at the Hutchinson Community College to choose a replacement for Commissioner Bob Bush. That meeting has been set, so.
And that would be for the unexpired term, which goes through like January 10th or something of that nature?
The second Tuesday in January is when the, the new commissioner that's selected will be sworn in. And then just a quick update, the Health Director interview should be completed by the end of October. And then I'll bring back some information on a recommendation for a candidate to the commission. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, do you have reports or comments today?
Just a couple, just two items, really. One is, you know, in past, the commissioners have been on the morning show on BW Radio and, and I will be on there this week. And I would think that we need to start that at least every quarter.
What day of this week are you doing that?
Thursday.
Thursday?
And so I think, I think in, in talking with Nick, why, he would welcome that, too. And so I just think that's a good public policy that we can get on there and do that.
Why, why did it, why was it discontinued? Why was it discontinued?
I think the changeover probably, and we just didn't pursue that. That'd be my guess. You know, and the other thing, I just want to report a little bit on a, on a school district down in Texas. They have staff, students, and faculty of right at 14,000. This weekend, their COVID case in their school system was 31. So, you know, we've heard how Texas was high as well. So maybe they're doing something right down there and I don't know. But anyway, I just thought I'd report on that, that, that we need to keep track of the, of the, what our, what our school count is. So. That's all I think I have.
Thank you. I don't believe I have any comments this morning. There's no other county business this morning, we'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you.